As a preliminary matter, this is a public meeting of the zoning board of appeals. And I, Howard Tracer, am the chairman. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Mario Canavelo.
Hold on, I gotta unmute him. He keeps muting himself.
Yes.
Okay, good. John Di Martino.
He will not be here tonight.
Okay, that's fine. Eric Spahn.
Here.
Okay, and from our staff, Susan Voice.
Yes.
Okay, we don't anticipate any speakers on the agenda. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Good evening. Today is August 13th, 2020, at 7:30 PM. And this is an open meeting of the zoning board of appeals, which is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order supends the requirement of the open meeting law. We have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the CBA is convened by telephone conference via Zoom, as posted on the agenda of the zoning board of appeals section of the town's website identifying how the public may join. You may join us by going to http/zoom.us, enter the meeting ID 82104598412, followed by the password 972547, or calling 9292056099, enter meeting ID 82104598412, and if prompted, enter password 972547. Okay. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and the attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Application information has been provided to the CBA members. Materials will be presented during the meeting. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Howard Tracer, chairman, will introduce each item on the agenda. As an attendee, we ask that you participate, keeping in mind the following. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when not speaking. Please use earbuds when tablets or cell phones are used. Please remember to speak clearly. And... Sorry. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that the video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured by the recording. The applicant and their representative will yield the floor and allow them to present their application. If the applicant and/or their representative wish to share their screen, please indicate as such so that you can be given permission to do so. After the chairman has afforded the ZBA an opportunity to speak and ask questions, the chairman will then afford the public comment as follows. I will seek questions through the raise hand function for video conference participants. This function can be accessed by clicking on the participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. Window will open. Window will open and display on the right. On the bottom of this participant arena, you will see the list of phone participants on the bottom. You will see the ability to click on a button to raise hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. Telephone participants can use their phones keypad while in the Zoom meeting to raise hand by hitting nine. I will seek to call upon questions from the public that have hit the raise hand button. In the order which they are listed, please identify your name and address and then your question or comment. Your hand will be lowered when you have given the floor for your questions. We will continue down the list of those who read in the raised hand column. Should there be a physical or electronic submitted questions or concerns that were received, they will be read for the record at this time. Okay, additional agenda items will be called upon and handled in the same manner. Okay. That's all I have. So we'll go to the agenda now?
Yeah, and I just want to comment that Elaine Baker is here. She could just confirm by saying that she's here.
Okay, Elaine Baker, are you present?
No, she can't hear us now. You can, Elaine? Wow, goodness. Why don't you go ahead and move forward?
All right. Eric, can you read the agenda, please, for tonight's meeting?
Good evening. Public hearings, number one. Ron Boland, 354th Street. Continued hearing, applicant is requesting a finding for relief from section 97-4D of the Newbury zoning bylaws. As the proposed construction will increase the height, the floor area ratio, FAR, and the lot coverage of the structure located within the Plum Island overlay district, the PIOD, for the property located on assessors map U 04-0-61.
Mr. Boland, are you here?
Yeah, let me unmute him. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
So we continue. I think Eric has contacted town council about the question that we raised at the last meeting. So I'm gonna ask Eric to give us the information he has. Eric?
Yeah, so town council reminded us of reviewing the substance of the application in terms of your finding is based on alterations, constructions, extensions, and shall not be more substantially more detrimental to the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood or the PIOD that we may not presume something that is not presented. But the determination is made on the information presented. And that in terms of the application, there are standards for submitting certain documents by which we need or have the right to request in order to assess and make any determination.
May I speak? Mr. Spahn?
Sure. It's Howie.
Yeah, okay. Mark, are you speaking to this hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I didn't quite know if you had audio or not. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay. So I would just like to quickly address a question to Mr. Savan. And that has to do with the substance of your discussion with town council. When you say that you're not...
Excuse me just for a second, Mark. Are you representing the Bolands now?
I am, I am.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know. Okay, go ahead and finish. I apologize for interrupting.
I should have stated that right from the beginning. I do represent Ron Boland and Leslie Albright in their application for a finding. And what I was trying to sort of pin down was the discussion that was had with town council. Mr. Savan mentioned that the board was not to presume something that was not presented. And from this, I am inferring that the town council essentially is saying that you can't deny this application based on the fact that you think it might be an accessory. I have that correct?
Yes, you can't. Yes, and that's clearly stated in that we can't presume something or may not, that may or may not be what is presented.
So we can bring back engineered plans to you with respect to the have right now. Is that correct, too?
If, yeah. And so I think, Mark, looking at the application and understanding that the proper documentation or documentation sufficient to make a determination is presented is in order. And secondly, that the... That the proposed... What is being proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Absolutely. I totally agree that that's the correct legal standard. So I think I have, I think I have the gist of what you're saying. And clearly, I did review the recording from the last meeting and we have some work to do with respect to our application, tighten things up. And so what we would like to do right now is to request the continuance to the next available hearing so that we can present, you know, compliant plans and application package to the board.
And...
I think we can do that.
And Chairman, before a motion is asked for, may I just have a few words?
Sure. Go right ahead, Eric.
All right. So, Mark, I think in terms of in keeping and not construing what it might or might not be, even if it looks and appears to be something different, the request is made to see if there is an alternate plan or location for the building that does not stretch it out across the site and separate the addition from the main house.
Understood. I'll discuss with my clients and see how they wish to handle the board's request.
Yeah. Anything else, Eric?
No. With that, I'll make a motion for the requested continuance.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, I have to call.
Roll call.
I'm sorry. Elaine Baker? Did you respond?
She dropped off. She dropped off for some reason, having connection issues.
Okay. Can Mario vote since he's heard the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Mario Canavelo.
Yes. Aye.
Eric Spahn?
Yes.
I think we're... Motion passes. So we'll continue to the next meeting, which I guess Sue will have to determine.
So the third Thursday of the month in September would be the 17th.
Okay. It's fine with me. Eric?
Yes.
Okay. Mario?
Yes.
And we'll assume it's good for Elaine. So, Mark, the 17th of November, I mean, September, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Good night. Okay, thank you, Mr. Boland. Okay. Okay, so we can move on to the next item on the agenda, Eric?
Will do. All right. Public hearings, number two. Nobleport Construction, care of Mark Griffin, 2020th Street. The applicant is requesting a finding for relief from section 97-4D of the Newbury zoning bylaw. As the proposed construction to raise and reconstruct a three-bedroom, single-family home will increase the height of the structure located within the Plum Island overlay district, the PIOD, for the property located at assessors map U 03-0-128.
Okay. Mark, are you there?
He's...
He's there.
Can you hear me?
Okay. We can now, I think.
Okay. So, good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Griffin, I'm an attorney at Senator Nicholson with offices at 30 Green Street, Newburyport, Mass, representing Nobleport Construction LLC in application for a finding for the proposal to raise the existing structure and rebuild a more conforming structure in its place. As a result of the change in height and slight change in footprint, a finding is required under the PIOD. So the existing conditions for this property, it's located in the residential agricultural district and the PIOD. The lot is legally non-conforming at 4,835 square feet. It contains a pre-existing legally non-conforming two-story structure. The property is pre-existing legally non-conforming with respect to frontage. It's got 70 feet where 125 is required. And the previously existing home was, or actually the existing home, is previously non-conforming regarding lot coverage. It's 20.2, slightly over the maximum of 20. And its front and side setbacks, it's got 14.6 and 3.7 respectively where 10 feet is required. The home is also non-conforming for the Florida area ratio. It's at 30.4 where 25 is the limit. Further, this home is built on grade even though it is in a flood zone. So the proposal is a reconstruction of a two-story, single-family home. The proposed home is going to be smaller in volume but taller in height and on a very similar sized footprint. So we're making this home more conforming than what exists. So with respect to dimensional requirements, the Florida area ratio does go down from 30.4 to 28.4. Still non-conforming, but more conforming than before. The lot coverage will decrease from 20.2 to 18.2, which actually makes it conforming. It's under the 20% locker threshold. The parking is compliant in the driveway in the property. There's plenty of square footage for two cars there. Further, the building is to be raised on pilings and to elevate it out of the flood zone. The footprint's been modified to bring the property more into conformance. The non-conforming front and side setbacks will both be brought into conformity and the non-conforming lot coverage brought into compliance, as I mentioned before. Right now, there's four bedrooms. The proposed house will bring it down to three and bring it into compliance with the PIOD. Roof height will increase from the 20.3 feet to approximately 32 feet mean. This is still below the PIOD height limitation, so that's also conforming. And again, it's the change in height along with the slight change in footprint that requires a finding for this reconstruction. With me tonight is Ryan McShara, Red Barn Architects. At this time, Mr. Chair requests that you unmute him and allow him to share his screen. And he'll be able to sort of go through a little bit with the nuts and bolts on how this project is going to be done.
Okay. Brian, you can speak.
Excellent, and...
Do you want to share, shall I share a screen with you?
If I could, that would be great, please.
Sure. Hold on just a moment. Okay.
All right. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ryan McShara, Red Barn Architecture, 84 High Street in Ipswich. And we have in front of you here the architectural plans and elevations for the proposed building, the proposed new building. So here's a 3D image of the home. The waterfront is on this side of the home. Driveway comes in on this side and 20th Street is back here in this general area. So we've got a situation where we've got entrance to the house underneath the house and coming up into the first floor. The first floor features a couple of bedrooms. And the second floor is our common quote-unquote living space. And you can see this deck off of the water side of the home that juts out over a portion of the first floor but does not jet out past the face of the building. So, again, ground floor plan here. We'd have access up to the building via this spiral staircase. And we have additional staircase that comes up under the home. We'd have area for parking and storage below the house here, all open and designed to flood resistance requirements. Up to the first level of living, and we come into the house here, and we've got three bedrooms on this level, one that operates as a master bedroom, so it's got its own bathroom en suite, and a shared bath for the other two bedrooms before coming up to the second floor of living space, which is, again, where our common spaces are. So we have our kitchen up here, our living room, dining room, and that deck that was previously referenced in the 3D image. Here's the front elevation or the elevation that faces 20th Street. So the spiral stair would be on the opposite end of this house and the deck would be on the opposite end of this house. You can see the stair that goes up into the building from below. Now we've come around to the left side of the elevation. You can see, again, that deck there to orient you to the water side on this side and 20th Street on this side. We've given you guys a height dimension of the building to the mean roof height from grade here. The water view, now the deck is in front of us with the spiral stair coming down. And the approach from the driveway. So here, again, the deck on this side with stair down and stair access into the building. Those are the proposed architectural plans. Mark, is there anything else you want me to go through for architecture?
Not right this moment. Maybe you could share the site plan for the proposal? The zoning site plan?
Absolutely. Okay. So, the extents of the lot are here. We have the driveway, public way coming in to that right side elevation here. Our basin, our waterfront is up at this part of the site plan. And you can see that spiral stair here off of this base of the building. So above the first floor living would be our roof deck here and the outline of our building here. We've got a couple of utility platforms off of this side of the building. So the new building is outlined by this dark black line and the tan colored hatch. And you can see the underlay of the existing building here on the site plan.
Thank you, Ryan. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Not at this point, I don't think.
Okay. Would you mind sharing the zoning site plan from Mark? From the previous application? Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, you just heard the proposal. And I think it's fair to point out that this is not the first time an application such as this has been brought in front of you. And so in or about 2017, a different applicant and owner had applied for a similar project. And as you can see from this zoning site plan, the footprint is slightly different, but the idea was the same. They were going to go up on pilings and build a two-story structure that would be, you know, compliant above the flood elevation and also to make the dimensional requirements more conforming. And so I would offer this to show that, you know, we're actually, I think, making our dimensions even more conforming than this was, this proposal was back in 2017. And I should note that this particular proposal was approved. The applicant did get a favorable decision on the finding. However, they did not move forward with the project and subsequently the decision expired. So it was unable to be used again. So there's a zoning table on this plan. And there's one on the site plan we showed you previously. But I'll just run through the differences quickly. Really, the only difference in dimensions that's sort of greater, you know, in our proposal, is the height. They were proposing 31 feet. We're proposing approximately 32 feet. So about a foot higher, but still both within the 35-foot mean limit. So with respect to the setbacks, the front setback, we propose the same as the previous one. Our side setbacks are both improvements. You know, they're at 10.4 and 20.9. We're at 10.7 and 21.1. Our rear setback is exactly the same as what they use, 10.4. Their lot coverage was higher than ours, 19.4, and we're at 18.2. And the FAR is very similar to the point where you might as well call it the same. They're at .286 and we're at .284. So I offer this to show that, you know, we're presenting something very similar to what was approved in the past and maybe even better than what was approved in the past. So with respect to that, I, all the information that you just received, I'll just run down the criteria for the applicant to obtain a finding at the zoning board of appeals. And now the use that's being proposed is the existing use, the single-family residential occupancy. And this use is permitted by right in the zoning district, the underlying zoning district and in the PIOD. The building is, again, being proposed to be taller than what exists in accordance with, and a change in footprint as well. And in accordance with 97-4D, 5D, a finding is required. The criteria, as you have heard many times, is that this will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the PIOD than the pre-existing non-conforming structure. So the pre-existing non-conforming structure is in, I would say, disrepair. It's certainly a tired building. And, you know, what we're proposing, I believe, is aesthetically pleasing. You can see in the renderings from Ryan McShara. And I think he's done a good job in coming up with a really nice design that'll improve the aesthetic on this site. In addition, it's going to bring the property more into conformity with respect to the structure itself. Again, the front and rear setbacks will be brought into compliance, lot coverage and bedroom count into compliance, and it's going to reduce the non-conforming FAR. I should point out that with respect to the non-conformities in lot coverage and FAR, since they're already over the dimensional restrictions, a finding could be applied for to increase them. And provided this board found that it wasn't substantially more detrimental, this could have been built as a larger structure, volume-wise and footprint-wise, not the smaller structure that we are proposing. And so I would also point out that for all these reasons, we believe that, you know, this is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. With respect to whether it's substantially more detrimental to the PIOD, again, bringing it into compliance with the dimensional requirements in the PIOD would seem contrary to that. So we would say certainly not with respect to dimensional requirements would be substantially more detrimental. But also, I would point out that the purpose, in part, of the PIOD is to reduce damage to public and private property from floodwaters, to ensure public safety by reducing threats to life and personal injury, to eliminate costs associated with response and cleanup of flooding conditions. Now, the current structure is built on grade. And so that certainly is not the intent behind that section of the PIOD. If, in fact, this project is approved, this structure will be put on pilings and will fulfill that particular purpose of the PIOD. And so for all of the reasons iterated herein, we would submit that this structure will not be substantially more detrimental to either the neighborhood or the Plum Island overlay district. And we respectfully request that the board grant the applicant's finding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Elaine, let's start with you. Do you have any questions?
I don't think she was able to rejoin us, Howie. She lost her internet.
She's, I do see her. She's muted. I see her. Yeah, maybe you can unmute her.
Could you close your screen, Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have to ask a question.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Who are going to be the voting members on this application?
Well, our alternate Mario Karen Merelli is with us here in it. Elaine Baker, our regular member, is having audio problems.
She's here now. She's here. She's been here. I couldn't see her.
Okay, so. Mark, I guess after I talk to Elaine, I'll let you know. Elaine, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Have you been able to hear all the information for this hearing?
No, I didn't hear the beginning part.
Okay, so would you feel confident voting on this or would you defer to Mario?
No, I defer to Mario because I didn't hear Mark's beginning.
Okay, so Mark, Mario Karen Bailey is going to vote along with Eric and myself.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so.
Is that okay, Mark?
No, no, that's, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Mario, do you have any questions or issues?
No, I don't.
Okay. Eric, do you have any questions?
Sure, I got a couple for Mark. Mark, you said that the previous application was approved. And I go back to my notes to 1215, 2016 and show two continuations, but can't find where we actually reviewed and approved it. Do you have an approval date?
I don't. I have the, the site plan that was done by Everett Chandler.
That's good enough. If you say you have it.
I think that was Ben Legary, Eric.
Yeah, I just, yes, it was. And I'm just, I can't find it in my notebook. That doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. So I'll take, I'll take Mark's word for it at that. I was just curious.
I can confirm that is the case.
Okay, excellent. Second, is there, it says 20th Street on the site plan, but is it really a driveway or an easement or something else here? Is it really 20th Street? Or is this just an oddity of Plum Island?
Well, we believe it's a public way. And that, you know, it's a legal amount of frontage. Again, it was fronted, approved during the first applicant. So we, we didn't have that issue then. We didn't expect to have it now either.
I know. I'm just looking at the plan, the way it's printed and what it says. And that's what caught my eye in terms of how it's stated. So it's just more for the record of understanding than, than I think it is an issue. It's not the zoning board's issue. It's presented. That's all I have for the time, Howie.
Okay. I know that we received two letters. I don't know if either of the people are present at the meeting tonight, Sue.
I see one of them, but if you'd like me to read them both now, that way they're on the record. And then we can go through the raise hand function for anybody who has questions.
Okay, yes, please do that.
Okay, so the first I received today is from Elizabeth De Graniere from 1620th Street. And I spoke with her today, and she has some concerns about the surveying stakes that were showing the boundaries of the lot, which have been removed. And she is interested in hearing some explanation to this. So the abutters will know what it means as the builder's asked to continue on the project. Not really knowing where the sight lines are, and they're not really knowing where those property lines are. And then the second is from Mickey Monaco. Sorry, I don't have her address on this. Hold on one second. 1820th Street. Hers is a little bit lengthier, so bear with me. Number one, with respect to the FAR checklist, application form for special permit and schematic presented. She's asking that, that the, that they address the inconsistency between the official public record from the assessor's database, which states that the actual living area is 1,272 square feet. The total area that includes the building envelope is 1,577 square feet. The building footprint, according to Town of Newbury records are, that are attached, has the sub area for the first floor is 600 square feet. And the second floor is 600 square feet. And the enclosed porch is 225 square feet. And the wood deck is 80 square feet. Finished area, 1,272 square feet. This is inconsistent with the FAR checklist for existing square footage because it includes the stairways and decks on page two and states that the primary existing footprint is 981 square feet. The proposed planned square footage on the checklist only includes rooms, hallways, and stairs at 1,372 square feet. The deck on the additional 196.8 square feet and spiral staircase slash propane 62 square feet are not included on page four of the checklist. The difference from the town and public records of actual living area and square footage and proposed square feet alone is 100 square, 100 square feet. And with the deck, it is an additional 196.8 square feet, according to schematic. And the spiral staircase and propane additional 62 square feet. See page two of the FAR checklist. The actual difference between the actual and public records and proposed seems to be 358.8 square feet. With all due respect, I may be calculating it wrong, so please address this. In addition, the schematic shows a roof, and the builder has stated that in one place of a roof, they will be adding a roof deck. If this is part of the plan, why is it not portrayed in the schematic? And how does a deck in place a conventional, how does a deck in place a conventional roof affect the zoning request along with future changes? Just a wee bit more. Number two, perpetual right-of-way is 10 feet wide, and the concerns are as follows. A Moffett truck mount will need to be used to transport all materials to the property. As a flatbed truck may not be able to go down 20th Street. We have seen this result and various problems occur in the past. Nobleport tried to bring a large dumpster to the property, and they nearly brought down my fence. Safety for people accessing the water and destroying surrounding property is of great concern to me and others. Where will the contractors and people working on the house park? There is no room, and even now, the builder has parked in the perpetual right-of-way on various occasions. I request that as part of both zoning permits and building permits at Nobleport and, and its subagents not load, unload, and park in the 10-foot area. That is their perpetual right-of-way. If the city allows 30 minutes, then they must adhere to that or get a detailed police officer to maintain public safety. There are two homes that will be under construction simultaneous on 2020th Street. Simultaneously, I'm sorry. And 2020th Street lot will need to offload and provide parking for all workers elsewhere. This is a perpetual public way, according to stamped renderings. If it is a private way, then the residents, all residents should be allowed time to vote by mail and request that the builder pay for and hire a police detail on these occasions. Property and damage to the property is of great concern. In the attached photos, you can see the proximity of the existing house to the water and the rocks in the right-of-way at the water. How many feet will the new improved version be from the original location? Where will everyone park during ongoing construction, given the actual lot size? Thank you in advance for taking the time to read this. And she did attach the reference photos, which I did share with all of you. And that's again from Mickey Monaco.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
Certainly.
Are either of the letter writers with us tonight?
I do have Elizabeth here. I'm going to ask to unmute her, and we do have somebody behind her.
Okay, that's fine.
There we go. All right, Elizabeth.
My main concern, and I sent you an email about this, was that the stakes that were put down during the surveying of the property were removed. And so we have no idea what the property line is at this point. And I don't know why they were removed. And I'm wondering, does that mean it has to be surveyed again? Because I'm not sure if they know what the property boundaries are.
Let me see if I can get an answer for you. Mark, would you like to address the question?
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
I can, Mark.
Hold on.
Sorry about that. So, I mean, I've talked to the contractor, and they say that they did not remove any stakes. You know, with respect to where the property boundaries are, you know, there's a survey plan on file stamped by a professional land surveyor with respect to this application. It's pretty easy to figure out. You can just, you know, sort of eyeball it from, from the plan. And look at, you can even look at your own boundaries and compare to figure out where the property line.
And if I might add real quick, that as part of the process for setting the foundation elements, generally, yes, the surveyor will come back out to the site, especially in a project like this that has a zoning board decision on it. They will come back out to the site and help us pin the corners. So as part of that effort, I'm sure he could also help to locate the lot lines again if need be.
Howie, if I might add. The risk is on the builder and the property owners for getting the house in the right location. And should they not build it in the right location, there will be issues about its occupancy.
Yeah, that would be a real issue.
It would. It would. So, Ms. Brenier, does that answer your concerns?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Very good. So.
Okay. I'm going to unmute somebody identified as MZ and ask them to identify themselves.
Okay.
I don't know. They're not. There we go. I can. Can you identify yourself?
This is Mickey. I'm the one who wrote the letter.
You are. Oh, okay, very good. Thank you, Mickey.
How are you, everyone? Thank you for your time. So, yeah, there are a few inconsistencies. Well, I would like to speak with the architect because also in the renderings, he has a gravel driveway going into my property in the drawing. But aside from that, you know, the, the right-of-way is very small. And we've seen the builder, look, we all want a nice house, but we've seen the builder come there and remove what he said was an asbestos roof at 6:30 in the morning. You know, take up the, the right-of-way all day with people parked there. They didn't notify anyone. You know, there were, there were no apologies or advanced notice. There are, there was construction on the house right next door. And there's a dumpster there already. He couldn't get his dumpster in there. So I'm really concerned because children go and play, everybody accesses the water. And it's just going to be a constant. So I think that that needs to be addressed because that's a matter of public safety. There are a lot of people that live in that area that have kids, and now kids are studying online. It's a very different situation going into September. So if you could address that, that would be great. The other thing that you keep saying is conforming and non-conforming is based on the numbers that you have in the FAR checklist. And, you know, there's some numbers left out. So when you do the percentages, you know, there's, there's not really a decrease. And it doesn't really affect anyone except for the fact that, you know, they're gonna, there, there is an issue with regard to encroaching in the right-of-way. Okay, there's an issue with regard to what you state is waterfront from the picture. You kept saying that the spiral staircase is, you know, over where the water is. But right now, the house is literally abutting the water. There's probably about, I don't know, I would say maybe 10 feet to where the property stake is. The other ones were removed, you know, they withstood weather and storms and everything else, but they're miraculously disappearing. And so, you know, there should be an accountability there. The reason we're worried about that is because there was a dispute down the street regarding the right-of-way between other neighbors. And, you know, most of us have lived there and had those houses for over 30, almost 40 years. Some, some people were even born there. And, you know, there weren't disputes till new people come in. And when you start pulling up stakes or things start disappearing, you know, there's a blurred line. And the problem with Plum Island is that, especially now during COVID, is that, you know, a building inspector can come, and yes, an engineer can stamp a piece of paper, but they're not there, and they haven't been there, and they don't, you know, there, there's always movement in Plum Island and people. So the issue is the right-of-way. That's the first issue because that's a matter of safety. And I don't understand how you can get workers and everyone, no one can park on Northern Boulevard. You know, we've had, 20th Street is extremely narrow. It's 15 feet wide, but it curves. So larger trucks like a flatbed cannot get there. They can't go down the street, and they certainly can't turn around to go back onto Northern Boulevard. So these are serious issues. You're also saying that it's a public way, which means it's a perpetual right-of-way, which means that there is a time limit to loading and unloading. That doesn't mean that people can park there all day. And it certainly doesn't mean that, that, you know, it's, 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 I don't know. I just, I, it's upsetting because I don't feel like there's a plan in place. And if you have one, I'd love to hear it. Or maybe we should just postpone this till you actually have a plan because it should be attached to both the zoning permit and the building permit. I mean, this is a serious issue.
Okay, Mark, would you like to respond to these questions?
I can't hear him.
Yeah.
Also, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
With regard to the roof, okay? The builder himself stated that they're going to build in place of a roof, a deck all the way around on the top level, and that's not in the drawings?
That's not what he stated.
Yes, he did state it to me. Okay, one thing is that I can hear very, very well, and he stated to me. So maybe he changed his mind, but he did state that to me.
Have you seen the plans for the house?
Yes, I see. I have them in front of me, the schematic.
Yeah, so.
Did I address that?
Yes, go right ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, we think that the confusion has to do with the current deck that's proposed. There is no proposal for a, a deck on top of the roof. There is a proposal for an open deck on the second story. And, you know, perhaps Ryan can share his screen and show that, if you'll allow him to do that.
Yep, go right ahead so we can clear this up.
There it is, right there.
Deck here, over living space below, but this is, this is the limit of the, of the proposed deck right here.
Right. And it's not an enclosed deck, so it does not count for FAR.
Right. So can you see that? And does that answer your question about the deck?
Hold on, I can't. Hold on. I can't. I gotta change my gallery here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So can I address a couple of other things while we're?
Hold on, I've got her. Are you satisfied with that answer, Mickey?
With regard to the deck, yes, because my understanding was that the deck was going to be on the roof. Okay.
Okay. Okay, Mark's going to continue to answer your questions. Go ahead, Mark.
So a couple of, a couple of things, you know, I don't, I don't know that I'm going to be able to satisfy, you know, every concern in this regard. But first of all, with respect to the stakes, you know, these are, these were stakes that were put on, you know, the applicant's property, or at least the owner of the property, not on someone else's property.
That's not true. That's not true because those were stakes.
I could just finish.
Yeah, you can. It's just the stakes I'm talking about are the ones that the city put in and they weren't done by.
Mickey, Mark has the right to respond. We'll give you a chance.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Well, maybe let's let Mickey finish because I'm misunderstanding what stakes you're referring to.
Okay, go ahead, Mickey then.
So there are property stakes. You see where in the photo here where the rocks are? And then on the left where the basin is. So where the house sits now, there is a stake that shows, you know, the property line before the water and the rocks.
So do you know who all goes?
That, you're correct. That was your, that was for the sake of the house. The stakes that we're talking about were the stakes where the city came, because that happened a year after, when the original property was staked because they've owned it for over a year, right? It was staked over a year ago. So, and actually more than that. The city came in and staked the right of ways because there was a dispute about the right of ways. So the actual stakes we're talking about are the stakes that actually define the 10 feet. And the 10 feet is very important because right now, there's like two posts right where the property is and it's 10 feet from there. And there are rocks all in front of it that are actually part of the right of way. But if you take the stake out and there's nothing that defines it, then there is kind of a, how do I say, how do I say it? There is, it becomes in question, okay? And then, you know, with landscaping and, sorry, Mark, yes?
Yeah, I was just gonna say I'm confused because the other abutter that spoke was talking about stakes that defined our lot. And, you know.
She meant the prior area.
She was asking how we were supposed to know where the boundary lines were. So I was assuming that we were all talking about our survey stakes.
Well, I think that some of them are one and the same and some of them, it's all meets and bounds, right? They're all based on different points in the water at the end of the street, you know, in the basin, correct?
I don't, I don't want to get bogged down too much in the details, but I do know that I've been informed that, you know, no one on our side of the applicant's side on the applicant's team pulled the stakes up. So, you know, if they were removed, you know, we're sorry that happened, but as far as we know, we didn't have anything to do with it. So that's, you know, and with respect to Mr. Chairman, I just want to address the other couple of issues if you can. So with respect to how construction is going to be implemented and, you know, how that's going to happen in the event that this project is approved, don't really believe that that is something that's within the zoning board's jurisdiction with respect to making this decision. It's got to do with sort of enforcement of, well, I guess, traffic and parking laws would be one way to look at it. And another would be, you know, the construction associated with the building permit. So the authorities that would, you know, sort of have jurisdiction at that point would be the building inspector and the police department. That being said, we don't believe that that's going to be an issue because we get the message loud and clear. We're going to be very careful when it comes to implementing construction in the event that this application is approved. And we will, the abutters' properties.
Right. But the issue is here that I received a letter that says it's not a public way. It's a private way. And that was determined. So if it's private.
Mickey, who sent you that letter?
Susan. Susan, wasn't there a finding where you looked into it where the right of way is not a city right of way or a town right of way? It's a private right of way for the, just, I guess, the people that live in the area?
That's correct. Yeah, town council did a review of that. I think I shared that with you guys. It was probably a couple, maybe three or four weeks ago.
Yeah, I heard you said it was a way, but it's not.
Correct.
So it is a huge issue. And that issue should be attached to both zoning and both the building department because it's a matter of safety. It's a matter of, you know, unloading and loading. So I think that we can request as residents to either have him do a police detail that he pays for every time he needs to do this, if it's going to take longer than 30 minutes. Or we can have another hearing and have a vote taken by every single person on the island and ask them how they feel about the use of the right, the private way.
Okay, well, I don't think that getting a vote of every person on the island is going to fit into how the zoning board of appeals works.
Okay. How can we put this in for everybody's safety then and concerns?
I have to agree with Mark's idea that it's not necessarily for us to make rulings on that. It would be more the enforcement from the building inspector and the police is my opinion. I'm going to ask the other members to voice their opinion. Mario?
Yeah, I was just wondering, maybe we can just ask the builders to re-stake it and put a barrier there or a line so people all know what the boundaries are. And so when the construction vehicles are there, people will know exactly, you know, if they're allowed to be there, they're not allowed to be there. So I think maybe we can, you know, maybe just illustrate this public way a little bit better so there's no private way. So there's no ambiguity to, you know, where the boundaries are.
But in a perpetual private way, there are certain rules.
I'll give you a chance to respond. Eric, what's your thoughts?
I think Mickey has a lot of great concerns, but I do think unfortunately, Mickey, that they're not zoning board of appeal concerns, that you do need to go to the police station and call in your concerns there about parking and issues of safety. And you need to talk to the building inspector about enforcement for construction. We can, we appreciate what you're saying. We do understand their concerns and we understand that there's issues with a public private way or access to the site. But the zoning board of appeals per the bylaws does not have jurisdiction in which to do this. If for some reason the road didn't exist, then we might have issue with that if dimensionally what is presented is what we're discussing. So I don't want to minimize that, but I would like to get to your questions of area and square footage as opposed to access and safety and construction, time and noise and dust, which are all under the jurisdiction of the building inspector. So I do hear you and I don't mean to just defer you, but the matter of jurisdiction for the person or the department that's going to enforce your concerns, it's not the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, because I was told that we can attach a request and make it part of the zoning permit because you're, you're, technically, you're saying if there wasn't a road there, right? But the city doesn't recognize it as a public road. So therefore, the police might not even have jurisdiction over a public road.
I think the police would serve.
Of a private road, I'm sorry.
Right, so.
There's nothing we can do unless it's part of the zoning permit and the building permit. And it's very clear that, you know, you unload and offload because it's, there are no trucks that can actually fit down there. You also have.
Mickey, Mickey, totally understand what you're saying. I just don't agree.
There's another house under construction there.
I know, but that is, it's our purview in terms of the overlay and the zoning and the guidelines. Talk about uses, talk about dimensional criteria and talk about the neighborhood. Once, once, if this is rejected, it doesn't go anywhere. If it is approved, then it goes back to the building inspector and the building inspector then controls construction and police and fire. Department of Health all have their divisions of responsibilities for which they enforce their bylaws. I'm not trying to defer it, but I think if you want to talk about your dimensional issues and your square footage questions, that's what we can talk about here. I think you can ask the applicant and they, and you can get the applicant to understand your issues. We're certainly allowing that. And you have right to speak up and put these on record. But in terms of, we don't have and do not attach typical construction enforcement rules with every decision that is made.
Okay, so if you understand that, Mickey will, we'd like to move forward on your dimensional concerns.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So I know you brought them up before, but if you can go over them again. So that we can find out why there's a difference. So go right ahead.
So when I look at your FAR checklist, that was signed by Deirdre and the owners and I believe the builder too, and you, okay? When you write existing square footage on the left-hand side and you talk about, you know, the four bedrooms and everything else, you include the porches and the stairways. When you put in the square footage for the proposed square footage, and it's also not correct because in public records, outside of the building envelope, the square footage is actually 1272. And it's stated in more than one area, page four. It's stated in the assessors database. So the question is, when you're doing the math, right, and you put the proposed square footage on the right-hand side, the two things that were left out, and you said the decks, so there's no other decks, sunrooms or porches. And you made that clear. You said that's not part of the FAR. And then the stairway is another 62 with the propane. It's not in there. So it's actually a lot over the number of the previous, the previous living square footage. And so if it's over the previous living square foot area, then the building envelope is going to be bigger anyway. So the question is, how is it 28% smaller? It's going to end up being bigger if the numbers aren't accurate. And that's where my confusion is. So if you could explain that, that would be great.
Mark, could you explain it or have Ryan, whoever feels comfortable with it?
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
I can now. Go right ahead, Mark.
So I'm not entirely sure that I understand the argument or the concern. I think what Mickey is saying is that for the existing square footage that we entered into our FAR checklist, we understated it. And that, you know, we were at, you know, .304 when in fact, you know, we put in 1,470 square feet. She's saying it ought to be 1,577. I respectfully disagree that it would be 1,577 because, you know, assessors' records don't come into congruity with the requirements for Florida area ratio in the PIOD. Notwithstanding that, if the existing FAR is actually greater than what we put in, that's not really something that's, you know, to the detriment of either the neighbor or the PIOD. That just means that, you know, we're reducing it much more than what exists. Because at 1,577 square feet, you've got a FAR of about .33. And, you know, the way we calculated it, it's .304. So, you know, that's actually, it would make the existing greater and not, not less. Why would we misrepresent that?
No, no, I think that the way I'm, what I'm saying is, is that the FAR was actually 12, not, sorry, not the FAR, the living square footage, right? Right? It was 1272. It's less, okay? And your proposed square footage is higher. It's like about 1,472. So it's actually the reverse of what you're saying. It's actually much higher than the actual original public record, not the building envelope. And that's all I was stating is we're talking about square footage now, the proposed square footage of each room versus, right? Isn't that what we're talking about?
You, your letter says the building envelope is 1,577 square feet.
Of the previous one, but what I'm talking about, when I'm talking about the FAR checklist, right?
You're talking about the proposal?
Yeah.
The proposal actually overstates the FAR because we included staircases on both floors and we included the hallway. So we were only required to include one staircase because you don't count stairs twice. We counted them, we counted them twice, which was actually an error, but it's not in our favor.
Okay, so the staircase, the spiral staircase doesn't count?
No, it's not covered.
Okay, okay. So basically, the additional 200 square feet for the staircase and for the other stuff is not covered, is what you're saying. And so you actually underestimated it.
No, we overestimated the 1,372 square feet by, I don't know, the amount of one stairwell opening.
80 square feet.
Yeah, there you go. So the things that, you know, you've put in there about the deck and the spiral staircase and the propane, none of those are calculated in FAR.
Okay, no, they were on page two. So that was my confusion. That's why I said, I was just wondering because on page two, you did put them in.
That was for lot coverage.
That's lot coverage. That's the footprint of the building, Mickey. At the post FAR, which is the living space under the roof.
Okay, so that was my point of confusion.
Okay, so you feel that we, that Mark squared that up?
Yeah, because I thought that it was actually a higher percentage.
Okay.
I'm talking about this, when you talk about FAR, you're not talking about the sub area, correct? Let's just.
FAR is the living space under the roof. Where the, where the footprint is the.
Everything that covers the ground.
Covers the ground.
The walls and everything. Okay, that's fine. Okay.
All right.
So, Hallie, if I could jump in?
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, so in terms of my measurement, and I'd like to give the architect a compliment for the drawings of providing a nice site plan, existing conditions and plans, which has nothing to do with anything else, so then it's fairly easy to see the dimensions. But I came up with measuring the first floor, the second floor in gross, adding the spiral stair, taking out the one interior stair, adding the platform for the utilities and still came up with a number slightly less than what was presented on the plan in quick order.
Okay, I think we'll set up then. Do we have anybody else that?
We do. We have a couple of more hands raised. If I could ask Ryan to stop his screen share for a moment? Great. So I have next in line, I have Smith, so I'm going to unmute you or asked to unmute. Or asked to unmute.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, could you identify yourself though? I didn't hear your name.
My name is Christopher Smith. I'm on 1716th Street and I'm here with Gene Mahoney. Just I guess a couple of points of clarification. We keep hearing that this was approved in 2017. I had attended that last meeting during a snowstorm. Gene Mahoney was there. I believe Elizabeth was there as well. The previous submitter was a no-show and it was to be continued. So we keep hearing this was approved prior. We were at the last meeting, he was a no-show. So I don't know how that was approved at the last meeting. So, so just one point of clarification. Second quick question is, the whole concept of the overlay district is to bring homes into compliance here on the island. And I guess just a couple of questions. The current FAR is 30.4. We're going to 28.4, which is in the right direction. However, the rule states 25. So again, we are trying to bring people into compliance with the overlay and the intent of the overlay district, but we're not quite there yet with this. And I guess the last question is in regards to the height. This end of the basin, there's nothing at 32 feet high. It, it's going to stand out. Most of the homes right on the basin are again at around that 22, 24 foot. And now you're going to have something that's about 15 feet higher. And I guess the question is, is there any way to, to, to bring that down? I don't know if the intent was to lift it up high enough so we could park under it and turn it into a garage, or if there was a reason why we were going up so high.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mark to answer your questions. So.
Yeah. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what Mr. Smith's alluding to is the heights of buildings that are not on pilings, for the most part. And so, you know, pilings add quite a bit to this. I'll, I'll defer to Ryan to, you know, actually discuss in detail how we arrived at that height. But when you, when you go up on piles and then put two stories on top of the piles, you, by, by the very nature of it, you, you have to go higher. So maybe Ryan can chime in on this, please.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Could I share a screen one more time here?
Yeah, hold on a second. Yeah, go ahead.
We did make every attempt to try and keep the floor height as minimal as possible floor to floor. So for, for a little bit of reference, this window right here is about four feet tall, plus or minus. So you can see we are, we're designed right down to minimum from the underside of the structure to the grade, enough to get our cars parked underneath there. And then we've got a little over a foot of structure here for the floor structure. Eight-foot ceilings, another foot of floor structure, eight-foot ceilings again. So we're designed down to a pretty small standard, I would say by today's construction technology.
And I guess the only other question, Mr. Smith, was about whether the previous project was approved or not. I'd just like to add that whether it was or wasn't, has no influence on this project. So are your, your questions answered? Mr. Smith?
He's muted.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Brian, can you minimize, make things a little easier for me over here? All right, thank you. He must have muted himself again. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I guess the two-part question is, I mean, so the intent is, is the height is so you can park under it, correct?
It's also a flood, it's a flood plane issue.
It's a flood.
Right.
Where are they going to park when it floods?
Well, that's their problem about the car.
It's their problem with the car.
Yeah, it's a problem. Okay, on the right of way, I, I'm sure they'll park on the right of way.
Well, that, again, is not our.
Well, it's my problem because they're wrecking my yard, my house, in front of my house, when they park there.
Okay, so you have to talk to the building inspector if it's during construction or the police, or if it's at construction, it would be the police, Board of Health, Fire Department for safety issues. The zoning board can't add that in for dimensional issues.
So you're going to build this house and these people are going to turn around and sell it to people who are going to buy it, a beautiful view, nice house, thinking that they can park there all year round and when it floods. And, but that's okay. So let's lie to the people who are going to buy it. That there's really no place to park there. There's no places for trucks to get in there. There's nothing. And they're ruining everybody's property around them. And who's going to pay for that?
Again, we have no authority over that.
Yeah, well, you know what? You take our tax money.
Okay, nice. So I guess back to my just two quick points is, I mean, the floor area ratio is an issue here. It's getting better, but it's not at 25. And I think the intent of the overlay district was to bring things into compliance. So that, that is one question that I do have. And I do think it is relevant for the record to say that we've been told time and time again that this has been, already been previously approved and it hasn't. We were at the last meeting and we just keep hearing this was previously approved and it wasn't. We heard it during Conservation Commission. We've heard it today. We were at the last meeting, he was a no-show. So it, it starts to set this pattern of, you know, saying one thing, saying one thing, saying another.
Okay.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to provide a copy of the decision. Perhaps you weren't participating in the continued sessions for this particular session.
I don't know if you were there, but we were all there.
Okay. Well, I can provide a copy of the decision to you, so.
Nothing was ever done.
Okay, so, so again, I'm just going to repeat myself and for the last time, what was decided in 2017 has no influence on this project. So I, I, you know, Sue will provide you with whatever, whatever you're asking for and hopefully that will answer your question on that. Okay, so. Do we have anybody else, Sue?
We do. We have Roberta.
Hi, thanks very much. My name is Roberta Mahoney and I live at 1520th Street. So I'm across the street from both Elizabeth and from Mickey, who discussed, were in conversation earlier. I have a couple of points. One, I'm very, oh, I like the cat. Thank you, Susan, for his cat sighting. I really do agree with Chris that the objective should be to conform to the overlay district requirements. I happen to think after our earlier conversation about the square footage, the FAR, the size of whether or not the stairway was counted twice or not, I think you're really very close because 25% coverage would give you just over 1,200 square feet. You might, on calculation, be extraordinarily close to that number. And I think that, I know I've done a renovation. I didn't do things that I would like to have done because I read those rules. I read them as applying to me. And I think we all live in tight quarters there. We should just conform to the rules. We should recognize that they're there for our safety and for our use and conform. I think you're really close and you could be a good example to the, to everyone around if you did conform. So one, I commend the whole long conversation about that and suggest that you recalculate and see if you can't get closer. On the limit of height, I mean, it's a, it's a real issue. The houses that have been at the basin are lower than what is allowed. And I think it changes the characteristic of the neighborhood, our little micro neighborhood, if you will, significantly by having us a much higher building, a building that is almost twice as high as other buildings are, let's see, trying to get you all back again, than what's there now. So I think that is a legitimate issue and needs to be taken into account. So that while the overlay district may allow for the, a 35-foot mean height of a building, they become a wall, you know, and it's not, that's not neighborly, right? It's not good for the community. So I too have a concern about height. The third thing I really do have a concern about, and I think it has to be recognized, is the right-of-way concerns. You've heard them from every abutting neighbor. The right-of-way, whether it's a perpetual private right-of-way, I'm going to go look that one up because I hadn't heard that before, or whether it's a perpetual public right-of-way, it's how we all get to the basin. If we're going to put in a kayak, put in a canoe, put in a skidoo, put in, go for a swim, whatever you're going to do, you go down that right-of-way. It's really narrow. And it's something that the whole neighborhood does rely on. To suggest that the development of the lot at 2020th Street is unrelated to the existence and to the dimensions of that right-of-way, I think is pure fantasy to ignore it. You can't, I mean, how else would they bring in building materials? The construction of the lot is integrally, integrally related to access to the lot. And so you have to pay attention to how people get to the lot, how people, how the construction crew will use and potentially abuse the lot. I agree that neighbors have the responsibility to limit the abuse, but you have a responsibility to consider access and use of that public resource in accessing the private land. So I think, I think it's not, not good enough to just to say, well, we only concern ourselves with the lot itself. You have to consider access to the lot. It would happen if you had any other enclosed lot that doesn't have public access. So, but I, but I will say, to end on a nice note, the drawing of the house looks really cool. So I think you did a nice job on the, on the drawing. Our access, our issues are related to access and impact on the rest of the little micro community. I appreciate that you have public hearings on this. Thanks.
Good, thank you. Some of it might be repetitive, but would you like to respond to that, Mark?
Only if the board has questions about what was stated, then I'd be happy to answer them. I, I, it sounded to me like these were mainly concerns that had been raised and, and addressed previously.
Right, okay. Mario, do you have any input on any of the concerns that haven't, maybe haven't been voiced?
Not really. I mean, the only thing, I think, again, maybe they can go out and re-stake the public way or private way, whatever it is, and, and people have a better understanding of where the lines are. I think that would help the situation. That's all.
I agree with you. Eric?
Yeah, I, I think after hearing everything, the, the issues are, is there any possible way to lower the FAR? Is there any additional information on the right-of-way, whatever it might be titled and deemed? And I have to say that, again, I don't, I hate to seem like I'm the, the proponent, but in terms of neighbors' rights, everybody has the right to, to build within the PIOD to the dimensional requirements that are listed in there. And blocking views, it's not unfortunately listed as one of the criteria to respect. So I, I think there's a lot of good things that are, are said. And I ask the architect, if there's any way, and I think there is a question about the, the actual FAR as calculated, as calculated to the letter of the bylaw in terms of the exact number, if the stairs were, were not included.
To the question of if we can reduce the design any further, I'd hesitate to present to the board that we could do that without further study. But I do know that we are already designed down to a pretty tight minimum when it comes to room sizes and everything within the project. I think if you look at the second floor layout, the, the spaces are, they are right down to where they need to be to be, actually be able to be furnished and be used as the spaces that we're calling them out as. Same as, as the bedrooms downstairs. We've, we've worked hard to sort of keep this thing trimmed and tight, as tight as possible. And I think too, as, as we're going through this discussion, you know, we're, we're going to be using building materials and lumber that suits this building. So, and by that, I mean, we, we're not going to be bringing in 45-foot pieces of steel on a flatbed truck to try and deliver down these side roads. It's going to be 12- and 16-foot nominal dimensional lumber that we're using here. So I think just, just something to consider as we have this conversation about access and delivery of building materials and that kind of thing.
Can I chime in, Mr. Jim?
Who's speaking?
Mark Griffin.
Oh, go, go right ahead, Mark. I've lost all video, so go, go ahead.
You mean, you can't see me? That's probably a good thing.
Well, I listen to your voice now, though. So go ahead.
So, you know, the, the PIOD takes into account that properties are pre-existing legally non-conforming. And that's the, the whole idea behind, you know, applying for a finding. It's expected that there are going to be properties that won't comply. And so under the PIOD, you don't have to bring everything into compliance with the PIOD if you're non-conforming. But what you can't do is create new non-conformities. And you can actually alter and extend existing non-conformities as long as they aren't deemed substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the PIOD. And what we've done, we have not, we have altered some of the non-conformities, but we've altered them in the correct direction. We've altered them downwards to make them more conforming. And quite a few of the non-conformities, we've rendered fully conforming. And the height itself will actually be conforming as well. With respect to the FAR that was discussed, so the proposed FAR is actually overstated slightly because, I don't know if, if, well, the, the staircase, which is 41.02 square feet and is shown on the first floor and on the second floor, that, those, that was counted twice. And the FAR rules say that you, you don't count it twice, you count it once. So we've got 41 more square feet in that 1,372 than we really need. So our FAR is actually slightly smaller than that. So, you know, again, I, I think that's a, maybe an error, but it's, it's, it's an error in the other direction.
The spiral staircase doesn't count.
Spiral staircase is not part of FAR.
Okay, I just have a quick question.
Again, I need you to identify yourself.
Mickey, the engineer, the, the drawing that was stamped by the engineer, because basically the building inspector, everybody, once, once an engineer stamps a plan, okay, and gives it his okay, everybody, you know, takes that at his word. Wouldn't it have been the engineer's responsibility to know if it was a public way or a private way when he stamps on it? Or do those little things don't, don't matter? And then they just kind of stamp the paperwork and then everybody sees that there's a stamp and they say, oh, okay, if the engineer stamped it, then it's okay and we can just move forward. I'm just curious why that, you know, is that important? I mean, for the engineer to actually stamp things if they're accurate or not accurate?
Eric, could you respond to that, please?
Sure. The ar, the engineer is professionally, is licensed by the state of Massachusetts to be a professional. He is putting his registration number and stamp and signature on the drawing. He notes how he came about the information on the drawing, and he's basically saying to the best of his ability, the information on the map site plan is accurate. We ask for and look for a stamped engineer drawing, so that we know that somebody else is a professional, has done the work to lay this out, and we're just not getting a hand drawing that supposedly kind of sort of represents the information that's there. He has the meets and bounds. I would assume he reviewed deeds, he, and records. He says he reviewed the assessors map. So, you know, short of the zoning board and all parties going out there and taking our own measurements, which wouldn't be accurate, because we don't have the equipment to do so, we're relying on this drawing. That said, the information that is submitted on an application, and any application that gets approved by the ZBA, the documents that were part of the application and the decision then get recorded with the deed of the property. Any, and the zoning board does not represent ation, accuracy actions of private ways or easements, and should there be an issue that is discovered by land court or, or issues, it is, it runs with the property and could affect a property owner in future sales of the property. So it is in the property's owner's best interest and everybody that's representing the property owner to represent the most accurate information, as you would ask if you hired people to do the work for you.
I agree with you, but thank you. And the drawings are beautiful, but there are a lot of things that we're upset about, because there, there was a little bit of disrespect also with regard to, you know, asbestos removal and things like that. And I guess that's a question for the building inspector and other people, but, but there is a lot of things that were done without permits that we know of, so, you know...
Have you spoken to anybody about your concerns with that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have another raised hand by Roberta Mahoney, if you would like to take that.
Okay, if it's about something different than we've already talked about, I'd be glad to hear it. Go ahead, Roberta.
She's muted.
Hi.
Yeah.
So I'm Roberta Mahoney again. It's a, an amplification of something that we have discussed. I heard from Mr. Griffin, we all heard from Mr. Griffin, that he should be allowed, the new building should be allowed to conform to the Plum Island Overlay District height requirement, because that is a PIOD requirement. But, oh, by the way, the FAR, the FAR is moving in the right direction. So we should, they should be allowed to have not conformed to the FAR requirements in the PIOD, but to get close. To me, that's cherry picking the requirements in the PIOD, and this is, we're talking about new construction. The old building will be removed in its entirety. So I would suggest that the new building has to conform to all of the PIOD requirements. Not the ones they like best, not the height one, but not the FAR, not the FAR, but not the height, both. Because that's what the PIOD requires, and it is a new, a nice new building. We're talking about a difference of approximately 124 square feet. I think on two stories of a building, you can save 124 square feet. That's it. Thanks.
So let me just respond from the zoning board end of it, not, not the applicant. The applicants come to us for a finding. And for a finding, the general aspect is that the project is less detrimental than it was before. The, the reason the zoning board exists is so that people are not held to the 25%, the 20%, and all the other things. So if they make a make an improvement, which they've made improvements here, then we can consider whether it's an, a project that should be passed. So it's not just because the Plum Island Overlay District says 25%. There is some give and take that's given to the zoning board, to the applicants, to come up to a, to a compromise that's for something better than it was before. So that's not an eloquent explanation, but it's really the meat and potatoes of it. Okay.
Howie, the, the, the PIOD exists because of the condition of most of the island is non-conforming to the general zoning bylaws, and as these houses are existing, the bylaws are written in a way to allow alterations or reconstructions with the understanding that the lots are non-conforming. And you have every right in the PIOD to do on your lot. The question is, is each lot is different, and so it's not an exact dimensional requirement, but it is a betterment, understanding that if the, the PIOD didn't exist, you would need 40,000 square feet of a lot before you could start to do anything. So the, the effort is to improve the, the non-conforming conditions to the best extent possible for the benefit of everybody. And you have those rights just as much as your neighbor has those rights.
Okay, so anybody else?
No.
Okay, we're gonna close the meeting and discuss among the members. Eric, how do you see this? Technically, Eric, I have to ask Mario first. So Mario, how do you see it?
I agree with what has been presented already at this point.
Okay, Eric, now you can speak.
I, I think there are concerns about the street that were brought up. I don't know if we have jurisdiction, jurisdiction over that, but certainly I think we heard it loud and clear, and would ask Mark, who's representing the, Mr. Griffin is representing the owner and the developer, to convey those issues on street and construction access, even though it's not our purview. That we had asked about reducing the design down. I think if you look at the plans, you would see that as the architect had mentioned, that things are fairly tight, and there aren't extra rooms, or there's not a, a deck that's sitting on top of the roof that we've debated before, and people have, have done within the right. And that the FAR is noted. I would just ask that if Mark or the architect could, could provide the accurate number for the application, so that it is per the drawings. That's really the only concern I have, is, is, is everything else seems to be in order, and the fact that they have removed a lotline encroachment and met all the other lightline encroachments is an improvement to the neighborhood.
Okay, so we'll open the meeting and entertain a motion.
I propose a motion to grant the application a finding for relief from Section 97-4D on the basis that the application, as presented, is not deemed by the board to be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the area, and will be an improvement to the neighborhood with the removal of encroachments of sideyard dimensions, that the sideyard requirements and lot coverage and height are all meeting the PIOD, and that the non-conforming FAR of 30.4 has been reduced to 28.4. That's the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote. Mario?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the motion passes. Mark, I would like you and to consider Eric's suggestion about the roadway, the private way, whatever it's called, to be considerate of the neighbors, and maybe communicate better than what they think you, the applicant has been. So even though that's not part of the motion and part of what we passed, I think it'd be considerate on the applicant's part to be more forthcoming and maybe try to ease the feelings on the street.
Mr. Chairman, happy to do that. Absolutely. We, we've already discussed it, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Good night.
Good night. All right, Sue, do we have any other new business?
Uh, no, we do not.
Well, that's good. So I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Did somebody make a motion?
Motion to adjourn, chairman.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, motion passes.